Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, on a God, and on the principle of liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Goines.
Present.
Vice Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Dunham. Commissioner Steinman.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and please note that Commissioner Dunham has excused. I'd like to call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process. If appropriate, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. There has been a request to strike the meeting minutes from the April 24th meeting and bring back the April 10th and April 24th minutes at the next meeting. Is there a motion on the floor to strike? Please cast your vote. Any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Staff?
There are no requests at this time.
Move on to our housekeeping item?
Yes. There are no items requested to be held in abeyance.
Okay. No motion needed, then. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be acted upon by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commissioner, a member, or applicant so desires.
Mr. Chairman, staff would like to pull item number six in order to add to amend a condition and add a condition, I believe.
Thank you. We'll pull item six. Do we have a motion on items seven and eight?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number seven and number eight as presented.
Motion for approval on item seven and eight on the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Item seven is final action in the absence and of appeal within 10 days to the office of the city clerk, and item eight is will be forwarded to the City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Item six, staff?
Staff would like to amend condition number three to read as follows. Prior to the submission for review of civil improvement plans, a revised tentative map depicting the installation of a multi-use transportation trail consisting of a five-foot transition strip and a five-foot private landscape quarter separated by a 10-foot public transportation trail path, as illustrated within the Las Vegas Master Plan Transportation Trails element, shall be submitted to and approved by the Planning Development Department and Public Works Department staff. Public Works has a condition also.
Yes, Public Works, Bart Anderson. We'd also like to amend condition number eight to read as follows. Construct the full-width median island or as much as legally able on Grand Teton Drive concurrent with development of this site to a design acceptable to the Traffic Engineering section of the Department of Public Works. The median shall be landscaped and privately maintained by the HOA per City of Las Vegas standards. The reason for the amendment is that previously the condition just said construct the full-width median. It appears that there are parts of the right-of-way that do not exist, so in the event that that right-of-way does not exist by the time they get their construction drawings approved, we'd have to exclude those parts. Conversely, if the right-of-way became available, the condition would require the median to cover the full width.
Thank you. More questions, comments? I'd like to have a motion on item six with the amended conditions number three and number eight as read into the record by staff.
I'd like to make a motion on item number six. The tentative map, 27023, approval subject to all staff conditions as amended.
Is there an applicant present? Do you state your name and address for the record, and just do you quickly agree with all conditions as has been amended?
Yes, Chris Kemfer, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. We do agree with the conditions as amended.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved.
That's final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Have a good evening.
Moving on to our one motion, one vote items, the following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we request to pull items number 10 and 11 to amend condition on each one.
We'll pull items 10 and 11. I'll read items nine, 12, and 13 into the record. Item nine, VAC 27447, applicant owner Hotspur Resorts Nevada LTD, petition to vacate and ingress/egress right-of-way located north of the northwest corner of Rampart Boulevard and Canyon Run Drive. Number 12, SUP 27536, applicant Chapulti Mexican Grill, owner Rock Springs Plaza Investment LLC, for a proposed service bar at an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow a 339-foot distance separation from a school where 400 feet is required at 7175 West Lake Meat Boulevard Suite 105. Item 13, SDR 27449, applicant owner Kurt and Deborah... Deborah Maja Chenaka. Say again?
Michael.
Michael Lonka for a... Thank you very much, for a proposed parking lot with an existing house to remain vacant and a waiver to allow a five-foot landscape buffer along the east property line where eight feet is required at 4309 Tom Boulevard. These are one motion, one vote. These are public hearing items. They are open. Would you like to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Motion on the one vote?
I'd like to make a motion regarding items number nine, 12, and 13. Recommendation for approval subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
All matters go forward to council on June 4th.
Staff, item 10. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, staff request that we amend condition number five to delete the word screwcap wine.
That's it.
Thank you.
Lenny Scar, 3753 Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. Mr. Rankin is correct. In condition number five, the first sentence, I would like to be amended to read the sale of individual containers of any size of beer or wine coolers is prohibited. The rest of the condition can remain the same.
Mr. Rankin, is that your end?
That's what I indicated.
Thank you. Motion, please.
You'll accept the balance of the conditions as presented?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Then in regards to item number 10, special use permit 27505, recommend approval subject to all conditions as amended.
Anybody else want to speak for or against this item? We'll close the public hearing. Please cast your votes.
Before to council June 4th.
Item 11.
Mr. Chairman, staff would like to amend condition number five to delete the word screwcap wine so that the first sentence reads the sale of individual containers of any size beer or wine coolers is prohibited.
Applicant?
Lenny Scar, 3753 Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. I agree with the condition as amended by staff and also the rest of the conditions, and ask for your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this item want to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, any questions or comments? Not, we'll entertain a motion on item 11.
Make a motion for approval of special use permit 27506, subject to all staff conditions as amended.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Before to council on June 4th.
Have a good evening.
Moving on to item 14, our public hearing items. Item 14, MOD 27044, applicant owner Hit W Douglas Family Trust from UCTC Urban Center Mixed Use Town Center to GCTC General Commercial Town Center, special land use designation at the northwest corner of Durango Drive in Deer Springs. Related item 15, SUP 27046, for a proposed 5,376 square foot liquor establishment tavern. Item 16, SUP 27047, for a proposed 3,200 square foot restaurant with drive-through. Item 17, SUP 27048, for a proposed 3,275 square foot convenience store with fuel pumps. Item 18, SUP 27049, for a proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment in conjunction with a convenience store. Item 19, SDR 27051, for a 41,741 square foot retail and office development with waivers to allow an eight-foot landscape buffer where a 15-foot buffer is required on Durango Drive, a 15-foot setback where a 20-foot setback is required for a gas station and town center landscape finger requirements within the parking area. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance to allow the applicant an opportunity to redesign the site plan in order to provide better site circulation, also to allow the applicant to meet with the neighborhood once again. There was a neighborhood meeting held on Tuesday of this week. In regards to the site plan, site plan has been amended. It is part of your blue sheet backup. Staff does have a condition change. The condition number three needs to be amended if approved. It needs to be amended to reflect the site plan and landscape plan date stamped 5508. Staff is recommending denial of the major modification as this is not in conformance to the Town Center land use plan and general goals. In regards to the special use permit for the tavern, that is a permitted use in the UCTC area, and staff is recommending approval. In regards to the special use permits for the convenience store, the staff is recommending denial as that is not permitted in the UCTC. For the beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment, staff's recommending approval as that is permitted in the UCTC area. And in regards to the site plan, staff is recommending denial due to the requested landscape waivers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to stay on this item as I have in the past. I do represent this property.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, my name is Douglas Hit, and I reside at 2208 Aliyah Court. I am the owner and applicant. First of all, I want to say I'm just honored that I'm in front of the commission tonight and have the opportunity to build a project in a market like this, especially in a great area like Ward 6. And we have done another neighborhood meeting, and I feel we've addressed the concerns of the neighbors and Public Works with traffic and so forth. Additionally, last time I was here, I was unaware there were 68 oppositions that were actually sent in by 13 families that duplicated the application, so I was kind of caught off guard on that. However, I'd like to turn it over to Gary Leobald, my consultant, to get into the details of our changes and how I feel we're going to make the project more compatible with Town Center.
Mr. Leobald?
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, Commissioners. Gary Leobald, 2592 Canadian Goose Circle in Henderson. I won't go back through the...all the details. We had a detailed presentation the last time. I'd like to focus instead on those reasons why we took the 30 days to redesign some things here. And those three things were really firstly, questions about the design, the appearance of the elevations, traffic circulation on the site, and so forth. And in working with the engineers on the site, Breslin, we've made quite a few changes that we think will render this a superior site. Firstly, I'd like to talk about circulation. We've got...we had a concern about the...in the previous plan, there was a drive-through here for the Walgreens, the window, and then there was also a drive-through for the restaurant, the fast food restaurant, which wrapped around and came out here. And there was a concern about traffic coming in, traffic coming out of the drive-through, and going into this drive-through. And so we've redesigned all this, and we've pulled, as you can see, the drive-through restaurant over here with the drive-through coming in smoothly from here and going through the drive-through window and out that way. And the additional benefit over the previous design is that the tavern and retail complex in the original design, the tavern was behind here, didn't have exposure to Durango. Now, the tavern and the retail uses have a street presence. They face Durango. And in this area here, working with Public Works, there was a concern about having a one-way flow for the window. We've added therefore two pass-through lanes as well as a third lane for the window. Both the drive-through for the Walgreens and the drive-through for the restaurant have suitable stacking, meeting code requirements. And also in the design, there was a driveway in this location. Working with Public Works again, we've moved the driveway to provide additional circulation around the C store. We've eliminated parking in this area to reduce conflicts with the throat over here. And we have redesigned the parking field. You'll see that we now have a substantial number of fingers in there, and we really don't need the waiver that was...that formed part of the initial application, which was for a waiver of the park...the number of trees within the parking field. We now exceed the requirement. Also, we don't know if there's going to be a bus route at some point along Deer Springs, but I think it's a reasonable assumption that that could occur. And so we've worked with Public Works, again, traffic, to design the bus turnout here, which can also function as a deceleration lane for people turning into the site. So quite a few changes in terms of the actual plan itself. Design-wise, last time, I think there was some comments about the appearance, that we hadn't put a lot of thought into the appearance of it, and although we had, we now want to really show you what we had in mind. And you can see in this rendering, and there's copies I gave to the clerk. I hope everybody has a package. This one's at a low angle, the other one's at a higher angle, but they show the same thing. And in fact, I think that packet may have the driveway of a convenience store at the old location, but this one shows it at the new location. And so what we've tried to do is take the facades of the buildings, and instead of having them as horizontal panels, to do vertical elements, both in terms of materials, colors, and also articulation, moving the facades back and forth to create a visual interest and still serve the retail needs. And I think the use of colors, the use of roof elements, and materials, stone, and so forth, really shows this as a much better project. You can also see that we've met the tree requirement along Durango with the Mexican fan palms, as well as landscaping on the private portion of the required landscape strip that goes along the sidewalks, the interior side of the sidewalk, which is the subject of one of those waivers that we had requested. The only way where that waiver really comes into play is right here, where we have to have a right-turn lane that pushes everything into the site. We actually exceed the requirement along the rest of Durango. So I think those are my comments on the design side. The second issue was the matter of public notices, Doug had mentioned, and we had those 68 research, those 68 cards that were received by planning, and as Doug said, they've come down to be represented by 13 households, three of which are out of state. And maybe Doug can talk about this a little bit more, but he phoned every one of these households. We got the phone numbers. In some cases, he was able to talk to maybe half or so of these people. The other ones, he left messages. We notified them of our neighborhood meeting, and which was held on Tuesday, and we had about, I don't know, seven or eight people there. And I would like to point out that even within these letters, there were two of them where there was opposition on some points, but there was support for a couple of the applications, and that was the beer/wine and the fuel pumps, which is really my third area of discussion. We've received positive comments and letters of support regarding those fuel pumps that formed part of the convenience store proposal, and I've passed those out. Just after I did that and the meeting had started, we have a copy of another letter, which I'll give to the clerk, and I'll ask them to pass that out as well, again, providing the support for the fuel pump concept. So those are my comments, and we would hope to get your support. We feel this is an excellent project for the site, and that the mod that we're requesting does in fact provide, you know, a mixture of activities on the site. It certainly encourages employment opportunities, and it does provide goods and services to the area in terms of things that people have indicated that they would like to see in the area. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Could one of you gentlemen allow the lady to speak? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Taylor. I live at 8158 Hawk Clan Court. I am here personally and on behalf of Northwest Residents for Responsible Growth, which is an organization dedicated to maintaining the quality of life in the Northwest. Northwest Residents for Responsible Growth attended both of the neighborhood meetings and spoke to this developer. Our goal is to look at every application that might affect the Northwest and determine whether or not the applicant and the developer are being responsible and respectful of the neighbors and willing to work with the neighbors. And in this case, although we understand staff has some denials to portions of the applications, we truly feel that this is a project that can be supported by our group and that this is a developer who is being responsible and wants to work with the neighbors. Part of the reason that we think that this is an appropriate modification and appropriate use permit is because it is going to go across from the hospital, and it is in the urban core of the Centennial Master Plan, Centennial Hills Master Plan. It'll be right across from the hospital, which is going to be a high-volume area, and I think that these will provide great businesses for not just the people who live in the area, but for the people who may work at the hospital to be able to use. The idea of the central core is really vital, and I just want to comment that when we all moved up to the Northwest, we understood that we were buying into the Centennial Hills Master Plan with the concept of an urban core, and that's part of the reason that Northwest Residents for Responsible Growth is supporting this group of applications. On a personal note, I just wanted to say on behalf of myself, the applicant has been really great about taking our input and suggestions for specific ideas within the general market segment concepts in the plan. And I just...and I don't know...
Did you give them my letter?
Yes. Okay. All right. Then you've been provided with the letter I just wrote to Doug with my specific comments regarding market saturation of Walgreens in the area, regarding my concerns that the current proposal for Three Angry Wives Pub...while I'm not opposed to a pub, I would like to see a different vendor go in there because of Three Angry Wives implementation of the lawsuit that was intended to gut the Nevada Clean Air Act and the potential for a restaurant that may be fast but a little bit healthier other than a Jack-in-the-Box. And Doug's been really good about taking that into consideration and at least respecting my ability to comment on those. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
I guess I'll just chime in. I know I was probably one of the vocal critics at the last meeting, but I just wanted to compliment Mr. Hit and also his consultant for basically turning this project around. I thought...I think now you see a lot more thought, a lot more aesthetic and appealing nature of the building. Also, the traffic flows so that we don't queue up on Durango, which is a heavily traveled street. So my comments are I'll support it wholeheartedly. I just thank you for going back and making those changes.
Thank you very much. I really put my heart and soul into it, and I do care about the neighbors.
Tell.
Thanks.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Mr. Hit, you're also going to see my support because I feel that when you get two families like yours and you get Jack Breslin involved, and you get old families from Las Vegas in something like this, and you all come together and you build something, it's, I think, for the better for the community, but most importantly, you've got the neighbors on your side, and you want them over, and they're here with you. They're not against you, and that says a lot about you. It says a lot about your company. It says a lot about your consultant, and my hat's off to you, and I thank you for calling me and for considering my input.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Trowbridge?
And good-looking kids, too.
I'm a lucky guy.
Enjoyed seeing them at the meeting.
You know, I would just like to comment that I was very favorably impressed with your willingness to go back and work with the community, having a second formal meeting and many other conversations with people in the area that were impacted by this project. I'm satisfied that you've gone back and taken care of my primary concern, which was the circulation patterns on the property with the traffic. I think that the buildings that are being proposed are attractive, and I'm giving significant weight to the fact that your open space exceeds the standards out there. I think that you're willing to accept the condition that you modify your landscape plan to make sure that the species that you're going to install are those that are in the recommended list. I am also aware that the cul-de-sac on...what is it? The Hit Family Court, or whatever the name of that little street is.
Yes.
Is a cul-de-sac and backs up against a wall of multifamily structures, and so there's no distant separation problems with this particular project either. I think that you've done a good job of working with staff and the residents to bring this project in, although I am always hesitant to make any major modifications to the general plan. I think this one has gone the extra mile to make it justified, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Evans or Commissioner Steinman?
Yes, I was ready for a motion, but it's Commissioner Steinman.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion on items...
Yes, on item 14, I think there's been a compelling argument for the major modification, and I too would echo the comments of my colleagues with regard to the revision of the plan to make it better meet the demands of the area and to satisfy the neighbors. So I too applaud you. My motion would be for approval of agenda item number 14, MOD 27044.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 14. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Agenda item number 15, companion item SUP 27046. Again, the motion would be for approval.
Motion for approval on item 15. Please cast your vote. And that has passed. Staff, I know you...excuse me, Commissioner Evans. I know staff.
It's on the site plan.
Go ahead.
Agenda item number 16, SUP 27047, also recommend approval. Motion for approval.
Motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Item 17, companion item SUP 27048. Motion for approval.
Motion for approval on item 17. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Agenda item number 18, SUP 27049. Once again, motion for approval.
Motion for approval on item 18. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And finally, on agenda item number 19, I believe it's a condition change to condition number three. Is that correct, Mr. Rankin?
That is correct, to change it to the landscape and site plan date stamped 5508.
That is correct, to change it to the landscape and site plan date stamped 5/5/08.
Thank you. My motion would be for approval following all the conditions of the staff with the revision to item number, condition three is read into the record.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 19. Please cast your vote. Thank you. All those items have passed and please show Commissioner Truesdale abstaining on all of those.
It goes forward to council on June 4th.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I look forward to building a great project out there. Appreciate it.
Item 20, VAR 26858, applicant owner Thomas C. Berger to allow a 47.5-foot front yard setback where 55 feet is required, a 46-foot rear yard setback where 50 feet is required, a five-foot side yard setback on the south and a 6.5-foot side yard setback on the north where 10 feet is required for proposed additions at 1405 Golden Oak. Related item SUP 26859 for a proposed accessory structure, class one, with kitchen. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Given the subject lot size and established setback requirements, the pre-existing building envelope is sufficient enough to accommodate all of the proposed additions without the need for a variance. As such, staff can find no extraordinary or exceptional situations or conditions to warrant recommendation for approval, therefore is recommend denial of this request. In regards to the proposed accessory structure, class one, with kitchen, staff is recommending denial of this special use permit as the scale and the proposed development in conjunction with the proposed additions to the principal dwelling would precipitate the site being overbuilt. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, my name is Sean Logan, 501 Aaron Way, Boulder City, residential designer, speaking on behalf of Thomas Berger for this project. We thank the board for the opportunity to request a variance for this residence. We wish to inform you that we have approval from all adjoining property owners of our use permit and variances requested. Unfortunately, the 10 Oaks Review Board is not to meet until May 13th to vote on this project. We apologize to the committee for the request to be moved to the May 22nd, 2008 commission meeting. At that time, we hopefully will have 10 Oaks Review Board's blessings. Approval from all areas are important to us to allow the board to vote in our favor. We thank you for your patience. At this time, wish to request a May 22nd, 2008 calendar date.
Thank you. Let me pose a question to our city attorney. Do we necess, we do not need to have his approval letter for him to proceed? Is that correct?
Chairman, no, that's correct. That's just been this commission's desire when we hear variances of this nature. Mr. Chairman, through you, if I might make a suggestion. I would be prepared to hear the item and since you have the concurrence of all the neighboring property owners with the expectation that it goes forward to the city council and if there were someone who had a problem with that, they would have an opportunity to voice their concerns at that time. Is that something that the staff would consider or...
Chairman?
Director Wheeler?
Commissioners, if I may, do you, to ask the applicant, you say you have the adjacent property owners. Do you have that in writing?
Yes, I do. I'm Thomas Berger at 1405 Golden Oak, owner applicant, and yes, I do.
Would you submit that to the clerk?
Oh, I don't have it with me. I'm sorry. I gave it to the board, to my board.
We've been expecting the 10 Oaks Review Board to have a very positive opinion about our project and we feel that it's obviously very important to have the review board's approval as well as all the adjoining properties. That's why we want to come to you with everybody that's happy with it, of course.
I concur and I think the board even more so is interested in seeing the support letters from the neighbors. So, I think we'll go ahead and honor your request that's read in by the record and at this time...
I'll make a motion.
We'll have a motion.
I'll make a motion on agenda items number 20 and 21 to obey them to the May 22nd meeting.
I believe, was your request the 22nd?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is that good with you, Mr. Rankin? Motion on the floor, the whole items 20 and 21 to the May 22nd planning commission meeting. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Items 22 and 23 are related items. Item 22, ZON 27507, applicant owner Las Vegas Valley Water District from U undeveloped low-density residential, general plan designation to CV Civic on the south side of Centennial Parkway, west of Fort Apache Road. Item 23, SDR 27508 for a proposed 10,719 square foot utility installation. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning application as it would bring the site zoning into conformance with the public facility's general plan designation. In turn, staff is also recommending approval of the associated site development plan review of the proposed utility installation, subject to all staff conditions. Thanks.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Bronson Mack, 1001 South Valley View, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a 14-acre site located near the intersection of, or at the intersection of Centennial and Fort Apache. The site will consist, once constructed, of a 30-million-gallon reservoir and pumping station. This will be part of the Las Vegas Valley Water District's water distribution system, will provide water service to residents and businesses within the Centennial Hills area. Just a little history on this site. It's kind of an interesting site when we acquired it from the BLM. There was a portion of the site that was within Clark County. That was a five-acre portion. That's what's before you for zoning. That five-acre portion has been annexed to the city of Las Vegas, which obviously is why we're here before you. The remaining portion of the site was already within the city. That remaining portion has already been zoned civic, so we would like to get the existing five acres that was annexed concurrent with the remainder of the site and zone for civic. We are in concurrence with staff recommendations with the exception of item number four. Within that item, the Water District certainly agrees to submit the technical landscape plan as required by that condition. However, we are asking for a waiver of the specific requirement within this condition to require landscaping along the western property line. The condition actually states that you would like to see trees installed every 20 feet along this western property line. And if I may, point it out here on the map. The western property line does abut residential property and we have been meeting with these residents. I in fact have conducted at least five meetings within the past year concerning this site. Our concern with the landscaping primarily has to do with the fact that there is a difference in elevation between the residential properties and our site. And our concern is that by installing trees within this area, it really will provide no aesthetic value in that the residential wall from the residential side, the block wall that is currently there, is approximately six feet on the residential side. The elevation difference is approximately three and a half feet between our properties and theirs and we will have a 10-foot-tall fencing along our western property with a 10-foot strip in between the existing wall and our fencing. By installing the trees, our concern is that the residents really won't have much of a view of those trees from their backyards. They may have somewhat of a view from the second floor and if you may allow me, we did put together just a bit of a profile here to just give you some idea of what we're looking at. This would be a view from the south looking to the north. As you can see on the left-hand side, we do have a residential home indicated. The existing wall sits here. Again, on the residential side, that wall is approximately six feet. Right now, on our side, that wall is approximately 10 feet. When we get to finished grade, that wall difference on our side is going to, I'm sorry, right now, that wall on our side is approximately 12 feet. When we get to our finished grade, we're going to have a difference there of about, it's going to be about 10 feet tall. We have a 10-foot buffer in between the existing wall and our future fence and our fence is expected to be 10 feet. That is what we are planning. And you can see there where we have a tree indicated. Again, by this profile, what we are trying to indicate here is that we don't necessarily feel that it provides much of an aesthetic value both to the residents or to our site. Certainly, we will have landscaping around the exterior of the site and obviously being the Water District, we do have concerns with water usage and we want to make sure that whatever landscaping we do install certainly has a value, not only to our site, but to the surrounding community. So again, we are asking for a waiver on that condition and certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
What's condition? Thank you.
This is condition number four.
On item 23.
If I may, I don't believe this was part of their original application. Is that correct, Staff? They didn't apply for a waiver?
No, as per Title 19.06 for civic zoning district, the development standards for the site, as part of the site development review are determined at the time of the site development review, excuse me. So, no waiver would be required as part of this application. Staff has recommended landscaping be placed along that western property line adjacent to the residential subdivision to mitigate any visual intrusion from the utility installation.
Additionally, trees are certainly taller than 10 feet and as we know, there's a variety of reasons for tree canopy, which are more than just visual mitigation, but a variety of other aspects of an urban environment and staff certainly believes that the full landscaping of the site pursuant to code is appropriate.
I concur. Hate to look at a hot wall, something that breathes. This is a public hearing. Are you finished, applicant?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come speak for or against this item? Please do so at this time.
Thank you. Lot 240, North 19th Street. I'd like to know, is this going to be a tank or is it going to be underground?
This will be a buried concrete reinforced reservoir, so there will be no tank on site.
So, the answer would be underground?
It is underground. That is correct.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Evans?
I think, I'm not sure I understand your rationale. You indicate that you don't think that the neighbors, there would be a significant visual aesthetic effect and for that reason primarily you wish to not put the trees in. Is that...
Well, again, as a Las Vegas Valley Water District, you know, we are out there preaching, you know, conserving water and desert landscaping. Certainly, trees, you know, they don't use a whole lot of water, but they do use water. Certainly, if the trees are installed, when they do mature, sure, the residents are going to be able to see the tops of those trees. In all of our conversations and meetings that I've had with these residents, we've had no discussion of any landscaping going in along that western boundary. They are aware that the fence will be going in. Again, being the Water District and our concern with water conservation, we don't necessarily feel that, we don't feel that it's necessary at this site. Ultimately, the majority of people who would actually be able to enjoy those trees would be those who are within the site, which would be some maintenance crews every so often and security.
But don't you think that anyone who lives adjacent to this would prefer to see a canopy of trees rather than a block wall?
To be honest with you, I can't speak for what the neighbors would want. I can tell you...
Well, I can tell you what I would want. That's my concern. One, the value of trees goes far beyond just the aesthetics. The idea that you can't plant a tree in a desert landscape rings hollow to me. The planting of trees helps clean the air. Aside from the fact that this was once BLM land and this is, you know, a civic use and I'm, if you were a private developer seeking to, you know, maximize your profit and cut corners, I might be a little more understanding, but it's the Las Vegas Water District. And my thinking is that you need to go the extra mile and beyond ensuring that, one, that the reason that the condition is in there isn't just some bureaucratic mumbo jumbo. It has a purpose and I feel real strongly about it and I'm a little bit amazed that, you know, that you're coming forward asking to not do what I think is an appropriate thing. The planting of the trees, in fact, if it were up to me, I would double or triple what we normally put in places throughout the valley. It's, I feel real strongly that you should follow the conditions and maybe there's some specific types of trees, but the conservation of water in the valley for, by not putting a tree just doesn't make sense to me.
Then that would beg my question of why did you put all those trees in the Spring Preserve?
No, I completely understand with you or understand what you're saying there. Obviously, the Springs Preserve, all the trees are in the Springs Preserve and as a public facility, it is open to the public and the public can come in and enjoy those. This is not an open public facility. It is zoned for a public facility and used for the public good. However, it's not open to the public. In other words, residents will not be coming into the property. It is in fact a utility site where we are supplying water and to be honest with you, we don't do a lot of landscaping within our reservoir sites. And that was really, you know, the concern of the Water District. Again, it's a cost to put them in, it's a cost to water them. Not only that, but it uses water and I certainly understand Commissioner Evans' take on this issue.
I think it's more environmental. Mr. Trowbridge, Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. Not to disagree with my esteemed colleague, but I think he's all wet on the water issue. He was deserving the smile at least. The, I'm going to, of course, support both items and given the opportunity, I would echo your comments regarding the benefit of water conservation outweighing the benefit of having the treetops show in a growth period that might be 10 years. You know, I think that the Water District needs to be applauded for its efforts on water conservation as well as demonstration projects throughout the valley, not only at the desert demonstration gardens, but also at the Springs Preserve, as well as each one of your sites. Your landscape is an exquisite job of zero escaping and I think you're to be commended. And I think that whoever makes those kinds of decisions is absolutely on the right track. And I think that putting green on the inside of a non-public facility is a waste of water energy and time. So, I don't think I'm going to be supportive on my motion, but I wanted to put in a commercial message for the good efforts that the Water District is doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Seeing no more comments or questions, we'll entertain a motion on item 22.
I'll make a motion on agenda item 22, ZON 27507, move for approval, subject to conditions.
There's a motion on the floor for approval of item 22. Please cast your votes. Correct.
Trees is next.
This is the zoning.
We're not there yet.
Cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 23.
SDR 275Z8, move for approval, subject to the stated conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. And that item has passed.
It goes forward to council on June 4th.
Item 24, SUP 27448, applicant Jade Tree Money Stores, owner MVR Corporation for a financial institution specified in a waiver to allow 1,120 square feet of floor area where 1,500 is required at 1610 West Oak Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed financial institute comma specified fails to meet the required 1,500 minimum space requirement, therefore staff is recommending denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
My name is Jeff Scherer and I reside at 7900 Gray Crest Court and I'm representing Jade Tree. As I put in with my application, in that area, based on the traffic and such, we're able to provide a two or three-window operation, which would be more than adequate for the traffic flow in that area. Also, there's nothing close to that area for at least a mile as far as check cashing and other items that may be of value to people that work in that area. There's no residents in that area for over 400 feet, so it'd be for people that work. Also, there should be adequate parking. We're a low, a business that doesn't have a lot of traffic in and out. Our hours would be early hours, 8:00 to about 6:00 in the evening, so we shouldn't have a traffic impact to the area as well.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 24.
I'll make a motion on 24, move for approval on SUP 27448.
Motion on the...
Excuse me.
Motion on the floor for approval of item twenty-four, SUP seven-two-seven four-four-eight, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
That goes forward to council on June fourth.
Thank you. Item twenty-five, RQR two-seven four-two-three, applicant Lamar Outdoor Advertising, owner, Kai Rainbow Promenade LLC, five-year review of an approved special use permit, U zero-one-three-seven-nine-five, which allowed a fourteen-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at two-two-zero-one North Rainbow Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, as the existing office, off-premise sign is in good condition and properly permitted, staff is recommending approval of this required review.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Scott Nafsker, Lamar Advertising, eighteen sixty-three Helm Drive. We accept all staff's conditions and ask for your approval.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? If none, we'll entertain a motion on item twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion, item number twenty-five, required review, twenty-seven four-twenty-three, recommend approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item twenty-five, please cast your votes. Commissioners, please cast your votes on item twenty-five. And that motion has passed.
It goes forward to council, June fourth.
Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' participation, citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Mr. Follow, you have till eleven...
Yes, thank you.
You have till eleven o'clock.
Thank you, Todd Follow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I missed the last planning commission because I was at...
Go till three.
At the sustainable art, uh, architectures lectures at UNLV. What I saw there appalled me. The lecture was given by Dr. Margaret Crawford, whose book on everyday urbanism, I guess, is quite the thing now. And during the lecture, on this, on the screen, they showed a, a new concept of, of neighborhood socialization where all the, the front lines were turned into yard sales, and one photograph on the, that they had was a, a front yard and a side yard filled with used mattresses. And the idea was taking from the Singalese or wherever. They said that this type of, of, of land use and that brought the community together because of movement and that. I was appalled. Evidently, Dr. Crawford saw that I was disturbed and called on me, and she asked me if I'd like to make a comment, and I said, where in hell is code enforcement? And I, so, one thing led to another, and I was told to sit down and shut up. But, but the, the thing is, Director Wheeler, I have always been on, I have always been an advocate for the live-work concept, and that's what they're using here, is the, the live-work concept. But I hope that maybe these pictures must be in her book or something, but I, I wish that someone could see this, and I, if this is what, I do not advocate this, my idea of a live-work is, has nothing to do with door-to-door yard sales every day and mattresses, you know, I, I was just appalled. So, I just want to go on record as, as saying that this was not my idea of, of live-work thing. The other thing is, I asked around, at the end of the meeting, you know, how many of those people, you know, that, that were advocating this were actual homeowners, and there was only three? So, the other thing I would like to get, and this goes to you, Director Wheeler, this is what they're advocating in the architectural schools, they're going to be graduating people with this line of thought. And I really believe that you and the council and, I just want to audit, tell them, you know, this is not reality. If you remember, poor Councilman Reese, we went through six to seven years cleaning up the neighborhood that I'm in, with order, Metro came in with order outs, because Metro says that, that this type of lifestyle brings in crime and that, and they're right, I mean, the crime rates just plunged through the floor after it was cleaned up. But we had neighborhood cleanups twice a year, if you remember. The city went to all kinds of expense to, to clean up this, and this is what they're advocating, and, and I'm just against it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Wait, I have one thing to say, very quickly.
Commissioner, Director Wheeler?
I, I want to publicly thank the members of the planning commission on behalf of staff, that you've put in lots of hours and an awful lot of effort, and all of you on your own time and giving up your weekends to make the conference that was recently here a success, and I want to thank all of you, because every one of you raised the level of the conference by having the participation of the planning commissioners on the workshops and the tours and speaking and the mock planning commission session, and you really made us all very proud, and I wanted to thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Right. Meeting is adjourned.